I call this meeting to an end. This is the regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County in Cochise and State of Arizona, to be held on Tuesday, July 7, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. at the City Hall Building, 915 South Toperville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornetto, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminho.
Yes.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, James Ledbetter, City Attorney, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, George Castillo, Fire Chief. Got a little turned around.
Thank you, ma'am. As for a moment of silence, obviously, we have a lot to contemplate. We'll be rapidly rising in the COVID-19 situation within our state and within our city. But I would also like to add, even a more sad note, that we lost one of our retired firefighters this last week. Kyle Metz was a firefighter EMT with our department, retired, and then went on to do many, many other things. And I know that he will be missed. I want to wish his family the very, very best, and they have our thoughts and our prayers. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first is that this, unless something dramatic changes in the next several days, which I don't believe is going to happen, this will be our last meeting as a live meeting gathering. Our meeting of July 21, 2020, will be a virtual meeting, and we'll be setting up the city clerk. We'll make sure that everybody on the council has the pad, the portable computer that pad, and how to use it. I'll discuss it. We need to have a practice maybe at like 6:00 to 5:30 that day. Everybody call in just to make sure that we don't have any bugs, so that we don't have some technical difficulties, which always arise if we don't do that.
Is that going to be made available to the public?
Yes, and the public will be able to, just like now, they'll be able to go in and see it. It'll probably be through go-to-meetings, and so everybody, there will be video cameras, hopefully that everybody will use, and so that the public can see you and anyway. So that's what we're going to do there. I have received a few phone calls and emails regarding an incident in Rury Gulch several days ago involving one of our council people. And I wanted to, because of that, allow Mr. Higgins to say something about that, as he would. Thank you very much, Mayor, I would.
When I was on Garden Avenue, across the street from the Circle Cave, I thought that a Rose Johnson mural would enhance and transform that neighborhood. Garden Avenue needed its transformation. It was called Crack Alley by many Bisbee residents. I left Garden Avenue 14 years ago and moved into the house above Rose Johnson in Gulch. I still thought Garden Avenue needed a Rose Johnson mural, so I commissioned Rose to paint the mural that's still there and is undamaged after all these years. We had to get permission from the Circle Paint Corporation, and we had to get permission from the city. The mural was approved by the DRB. The city had just recently begun to enforce its own rules. This was the first time Rose had asked for permission, and she did it willingly. The rules for painting in the historic district are simple. You need permission, and you can't paint on our historic brick. Everyone should be able to follow these simple rules. I am passionate about maintaining. Did you say something to me?
No, I was joking.
Oh. I am passionate about maintaining our historic district. Maybe too passionate. I became overheated after violations of these simple rules and lost it for a few moments, and it was captured by a cell phone. I would like to apologize to all the residents of the city of Bisbee, and especially to the people that witnessed my out-of-control and challenged behavior. I ask for your forgiveness and mercy. It will not happen again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Moving on to accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $491,587.58.
Thank you, I'll second that. Do we have questions?
I have.
Yes, ma'am.
I have. Let's see who's here. On page one, the holder section for the title of Ola Ha, it says, "Does not exist." What does not exist?
So those were imported to the file in the wrong format, so they were manually corrected.
Okay. Okay, and then on page three, there is this $1054,000 contract services for plan or bike trail for $300,000.
Yes, so that is to the county. The city budgeted funds to use county planning, and county planning is sharing the cost of area, Bisbee area master mobility plan, and that would be our share of the work that's done today.
Okay. And then on page four, it's $1055,46,000, and it's for banners. What are the banners for? It's right at the very top of page one.
Oh, right at the very top. Those are the mast banners that are hanging throughout Bisbee.
And they're how much?
It was $368.80. That is a reimbursable expense.
Okay. And then on page five, $1062,46,000, and it's for shoe polish. I know it's not very much, but I'm just wondering how I'd work for some shoe polish.
I'm not seeing it for how much.
Estadiol supplies. If you go down in here. It's $1062,46,000. For operational expenses, sorry. It's in the middle of page five. If you see Kleenex, then they'll see shoe polish.
That would be in the police department.
They can't purchase shoe polish?
I don't know what, I can't tell you what they were polishing.
Okay, I just, it was kind of an odd thing. And then also on that same page, we have Lee's Auto Sale, and it's for the Ford M150 and the Chevy Avalanche?
Yes, those are the emergency purchases that you'll have an opportunity to approve at this meeting.
Okay, but if we approve accounts payable, then it's already approved. And again, that was paid on 6/29. So is that one of those better just for forgiveness than permission, or what? Why?
Well, we do want to talk about it now instead of what you've done up here.
Yeah, I was just curious why we're approving before it's even coming for us. I have an issue with that. Not so much the issue with the purchase, but in the manner in which it's done. And on page nine, there is for Parks and Rec. For special event, storage container unit for $3,622.29.
Yes, we purchased that through that form, I apologize. We purchased that through that fund so that we can store the items that we have for special events, the festival lights, we have some things that we didn't have for different events. So we purchased that with, you know, we did get multiple proposals, and we did choose the lower proportion. That was, we did have the available funds in that account for that purchase.
Okay, now, is where, is this going to be placed here somewhere?
It's already here.
Isn't it?
It's right outside, in the corner, in the southeast corner of this facility. It's placed right there. It's available for those purposes, and if we have that feeling, we'd be glad to share that storage facility.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there movie screen in there too?
The, you're talking, I assume you're talking about the screen for the movie department? Yeah, I assume there should be plenty of room for them to store and store. Right now, it's empty. It doesn't have any of the shelves or anything. So you just got that at the end of last week.
Yeah, I noticed. And that's a great price for one of those units I purchased in the corner, so. Anything else?
On page two, we have the ACMA memberships, renewal and annual memberships. Could you explain what the ACMA is?
Yes, so ACMA is your Arizona City Income Managers Association, so it would be the local branch of ICMA, and that's the International City Income Managers Association.
And just what do they do?
So they provide educational resources, annual meetings. That's what the Code of Ethics for City Managers is developed, is at the ICMA level. And then regionally or statewide, it provides a networking organization and also educational opportunities for city and county managers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's kind of like Lee's Citizens in Times for us.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've got one that I missed.
Okay.
On page six, midway down, we have an expenditure for $1,259.45 for Ambiserv. I thought we had switched billing companies. I thought Ambiserv was our new company?
No. Okay. So this is 3.5% of the net cash collected, so both our current company and our past company are still collecting for us. So if it's an amount that was collected for a bill that was handled through the previous company, then we would still be paying the 3.5% of what they collected, and we do the same with our current company.
So we have both companies?
No, no, no.
No?
If I might, let me just try to, when the new contract came in, there were still accounts that the old company had, and they're still collecting those accounts. And so you don't, when you get the new company, you don't hand the accounts that the other company has to the new company. They get to finish those. So that's what it is right now, is they are still collecting money for us on those accounts, and we're paying them back their percentage. And pretty soon that will, all those accounts will be gone, and it will only be our current company.
Okay, so then how many more accounts do they have?
I would have to have Carrie do an accounting for you of what's open with each company. I don't have that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Sure, sure, Carrie, thanks for that.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion, and we have a sentence. All those in favor of paying accounts receivable, sing as I was stating, aye. Opposed? Aye.
None.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
So I believe that's five to.
I also voted so.
What?
Did you get my vote?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why it's five to two.
Okay.
We need to go back to call to the public.
Oh.
I just thought there was nobody there.
I apologize, we've got a little.
I'm sorry. I just thought we got one.
That's my, that's my, obviously my issue. So please, could we go back to call to the public? And I believe we have a couple, and Ms. Coleman, you're going to be reading those.
I am.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. The first is from Susan Payne. With my face covering on, my hat off to the mayor for taking a scan on face covering. It's the only way many of us will feel safe enough to shop in our communities. Otherwise, we don't shop, and that directly affects the economics of our communities. Thank you again for your wisdom to protect all. Susan Payne.
Thank you.
And Yvette Ponte. Greetings. I am addressing the council today with a concern about Main Street. When I refer to Main Street, I am referring to every retail establishment in 85603. As of July 6, there are approximately 35 retail businesses I recognize in my neighborhood alone that are closed. There are some that want to remain open and cannot due to the updated restrictions as of June 30. There are a few more that are partially open but questionably sustainable. Currently, the physical health of the community is being addressed while financial health of the community is in peril. There is a need to balance the health correct pace along with the sustainability of Bisbee, especially there is not an end in sight regarding the pandemic. Bisbee's primary industry is tourism. It is the only renewable resource that we have. Other sources of local income are finite. If we disregard this, we will find ourselves on the brink of becoming a ghost town in the midst of a pandemic. We must start working on saving our small community while bearing in mind the global situation. I propose that an ad hoc committee be created under temporary ordinance with the interest of maintaining Main Street, helping Main Street victims of COVID-19. The mission of our community committee would be to discuss the future of Main Street and how we can mitigate losses now and into the future, as well as how businesses can operate in a safe manner utilizing CDC guidelines. In this respect, citizens of Bisbee that currently do not have a voice can be collectively heard and assisted. The goal being to maintain and sustain our town as best we can through the pandemic for as long as possible. At this time, I am respectfully requesting a show of hands from council members who are in support of establishing an ad hoc committee comprised of vetted local residents in support of local business. It is understood this under scrutiny and will be added to a future agenda if enough interest is expressed. Truly, Yvette Ponte.
Thank you, Ms. Eno.
That is all.
Thank you, ma'am. Consent agenda, there's A and B. Item A is approval of the minutes of the regular session of the Mayor and Council, held on June 16, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Item B, approval of a liquor license application for electric brewing located in 1326 West Highway 92, number eight, Bisbee, Arizona. Joseph Charles Frederick, applicant. Is anybody on council?
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
The Fredericksons, Joseph, Natalie, and Winston, all were here this evening in support of their application, but because it was a closed meeting, the city clerk and I had to turn them away, but they did want to come in support of their application. They were physically present attempting to come to them.
Thank you, then.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The city member, the council, want any of those pulled for discussion.
I just, do I have to pull if I just have this location?
That's.
Is it in the sound of the?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
That's where electric came.
Okay, that's why I just went for it, thank you.
Yeah. Anything? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item C and B.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion and a sentence. Ms. Cornetto?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number three, discussion of possible approval of a memorandum of agreement with NOTAM management system between aeronautical services, H A M-336, and the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, and the Bisbee Municipal Airport, D O Four. Mr. Haro.
The mayor and the council. This is a memorandum of agreement so that we can use the FAA's NOTAM, is the way that's typically pronounced, NOTAMS Management System. This will allow us to notify aircrafts coming into our airport of things that they may need to know, maybe some runway conditions, and again, a good example would be when we go and we do the switch, we switch our fueling system. So that day, we would have a day or two where our fueling system would be down. We would utilize this management system to notify aircrafts coming in of those types of things.
Is this a, this is a loop that's continually played that the aircraft can tune in on that provides that information?
No, I'm not quite sure, and part of this, a part of this memorandum of agreement is so that the airport facility manager or operations manager, Matthew or myself, we can actually get trained on how to use that. Previously, no person that has been, we haven't been moved to use that.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have.
Okay, Ms. Hanson?
When you say the inclusion of the runway, you're not telling me what to do, correct?
No, it would be if we have, for example, if we had a project that we were doing, we shut down maybe a taxiway or something to that effect.
Okay.
It's just, it's just something that we can give aircrafts coming in notifications of whatever report is they, they leave their line of reports when they're coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Frederick.
Thank you. On page two, airport will provide personnel and web access computers, accessible computers, internet access, and any related and required equipment to run operation of the NOTAM management system. Do we have any, do we have any paperwork already?
We, this is more specific to us using our computers. We will be, we're responsible for providing our own computers so that we can upload those types of things. We do not have a computer or internet access at our airport currently. That is something that the airport facility manager herself might have been considering, given that our fueling system will require internet, so that is something we are looking to.
And to continue along that line, on page four, Article Eight, funding and payment, there will be no exchange of monies, since each party shall bear their own costs to implement this project beneath the goals and objectives of it as outlined above. That implies cost to the city. Do we have any idea how much that's going to be?
That cost is, again, us supplying our own computers and our own internet that we have our own computers currently that we would use. It would just be the cost of supplying internet that we would like to have there. Currently, we have a line line phone that our fueling system was up with, so we would eliminate that line line phone and put in internet. The cost, I would assume, would wash.
Okay, thank you.
What internet are you going to use? Because cable one probably doesn't go out there.
We currently, right now, have a, the airport facility, airport facilities manager is utilizing one of the jetpacks that he got from the library, so we have that option, but we haven't gone far into seeing if we could get the ethernet internet.
Ms. Cornetto?
I had the same questions as Mr. Pollak, but right here on the fiscal impact, it says not, so it's not going to cost it?
It doesn't cost us anything to utilize their management system. They maintain the management system. This is solely so that we are in agreement with, we're not paying them anything, they aren't supplying us with any equipment, we supply our own equipment, and then they will also provide us with training so that we can, we use it appropriately.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the aeronautical services, H A M-336, of the Federal Aviation Administration, and the Bisbee Municipal Airport.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Ms. Cornetto?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item four, discussion of possible approval of entry into an agreement with Lycex for a drive cam program trial agreement. Now, this sounds fascinating.
This is a trial for some cameras that both have the ability to both view the forward view of a driver and the actual path, Lytics. They, they, they say that they want to be able to monitor the driver so that we can monitor their behavior, make sure that they're, whether they're wearing their seatbelt, those types of things. This is, we have been looking into these types of cameras, more specifically for our trash vehicles, but this will give us, this trial will give us an opportunity to use it on different types of vehicles. Again, it's a three-month trial, free of charge. If we decide that we do not want to go into a paid service event, then we should simply remove the cameras and send them back. Part of their trial limit is they come here, they install them, they will show Lycex how to remove them, and they will also give us some training on those cameras.
Great. Questions? Can I ask her? Yes. Mayor Frederick, what is, what is the exact benefit of this to the city?
Well, my, as I mentioned, the, my interest in these is that we receive a number of phone calls throughout the week that, as it is for saying that trash is going to be picked up. I, it would be nice to, if these cameras have the ability for me to go and give them live, or even rewind back a few minutes, if somebody called and says a trash just drove by their house and did not pick up the trash, we can go look to see, was there a reason, was there a legitimate reason, was there a car vehicle away, was the trash actually out there? I, it's really just a trial. I, it's really just a trial to see if this, if this works and if it would be a benefit to us to do a paid service.
And second question, did they indicate to you what the cost would be after ninety days if we chose to use the program?
Yes, I don't recall the specific numbers, but I believe that the annual fee for some funding for this is about a thousand dollars. And I want to say it was one thousand fifty dollars per camera that includes all of the software, they maintain all of the video footage on their servers. It would be essentially a, a software, annual service agreement.
How many cameras are you going to use in the text?
Six, we're getting six. We currently, I plan on putting three on the blue trash trucks that we use, see how it goes, that would give us three additional cameras to put on different types of vehicles. We haven't decided exactly what other three vehicles we have, we will not put them in our suite, but definitely open to suggestions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here we go, do we have a motion?
I move to approve agreement with Ly, how do you pronounce that?
Lytics.
Lytics for a Drive Cam program trial agreement.
I'll second that. Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes by me too. Item number five, discussion of possible approval to enter into a contract with K E and G Construction Inc. to apply asphalt overlay to Tombstone Canyon. Mr. Harrow?
Mr. Mayor, I'm excited to bring this one before you. This is something that I have been working on for quite some time since I've been here. We've gone through some different iterations on how to go about this project. As we, as I met with our streets and infrastructure committee, became clear that they wanted to have something that was going to last for some time. And so I spent some time on working with some different construction companies. I did receive some proposals from three, one of them being K E and G. K E and G is a, is on a cooperative contract, so they have competitively did their, their services for this. We will be applying this to, it says to Tombstone Canyon, but this, to be clear, it includes Nakaw Road, Main Street, and Tombstone Canyon from the north intersection of the A dot right away to the south intersection of the A dot right away. Again, this will be a nominal two-inch overlay, maybe thicker in some places, less thick in some other places. We'll be applying thermal plastic striping so that stripping will last longer, thermal strap, thermal plastic stripping typically lasts about five years. There may be some minor changes to the stripping, but nothing very significant. This is something that we, I have documented for, as I mentioned, and it is in our budget. I did ask for a 20% contingency, which is pretty typical in a larger construction project. I don't anticipate using that, but it's the adjusting case.
Corinna?
I spoke with K E and G, they have us penciled in for the end of this month, beginning of August. I did contact all of the utility companies to make sure that they were aware that we had this in our books. They have been working diligently to try to complete all of their projects within that, within our scope of part of this project. I do not plan on approving or approving any right of way from this, we'll have a street cut in this new asphalt for at least a year if for some reason there was an emergency where that has to happen. I did make that, make that clear when I spoke with the utility companies that it won't be just a, a, it won't be a larger portion that we will have to cut and replace so that it looks nice. This is something that is, we're putting in a, a lot of our assets into, it should, it should look in, in function for a long time.
Well, great, this is something that people downtown, all of us, have been waiting for for a long time, but it's really beautified that area from eighty to eighty. Great, thank you. Any questions? Ms. Klein?
You said that we received three bids, four are the other bidders?
I was working with Tucson Asphalt and Sunderland Asphalt.
And actually, who was the last one?
Sunderland.
Okay, and then the other question is, how come we don't have their bids in just for comparison purposes?
The, I can, I can provide those to you, I didn't provide them because this is a cooperative, it's bid, it's already been, these are mine items that they have, that they've competitively bid. I can't, I can't provide, provide those to you. I think you could cost, or if you would like to know, the Tucson Asphalt came in at approximately 1.1 million dollars and Sunderland Asphalt came in at about 860,000.
I would like to see...
Absolutely, I think you're right.
And, you know, I know that K E and G does an awful lot of work for us, and they have for many years, but they're also, they've also got a lot of change orders that add to the final cost. I don't want to concern.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Last year, I believe, you got a bid for this project. Do you remember the amount of that bid?
So last year, when we first started looking at this project, we were going to apply a story seal, and that story seal came in at about 400,000. So this is, the scope of this project has changed from a story seal to a full-on asphalt overlay.
Have you taken into consideration the fact that late July and August is a wet part of the year?
Yes, we have. I have spoken with K E and G and we have spoken, and we are aware of that.
They're okay with this? I think they can perform?
Yeah, they, they will do this in a number of different smaller phases that should allow us to be able to complete, complete paving without having open cuts, so that makes, we avoid that mess.
What's the performance period?
They have a one-year warranty on their payment.
No, not the warranty.
I'm sorry?
To perform, how long do they have to perform the job?
Did not specify the time that it would take for them to complete that. I, it would be on top of, it would be, I don't have a specific time of deadline.
Have they made any commitment to you as to how long it takes them?
They did not.
May I ask you why?
I don't have a reason why. I did, I just, I've been working with K E and G, I haven't had any issues with them not performing, they seem to be eager to do some of the, some projects within the city, so I, we can, we can definitely look at that if you were to see that.
Were these line items pre-negotiated, like a job board of contract? Did you just provide them with the line items and then give them the estimate based on that?
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you.
Ms. Jackman?
It says in here, export costs of construction, water, landscape, it's got proceeding herbicide. What herbicide are they going to be using?
They would have to apply herbicide so that we can stop the growth underneath. I do not know...
I know what herbicide is.
I do not know specifically what type of herbicide they are going to use.
Could you find out? Please, I would like to know what it is.
I can.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract with K E and G Construction Incorporated to apply an asphalt overlay to Tombstone Canyon.
Second. We have a motion in second, and Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number six, thank you, Mr. Harrow. Item number six, discussion of possible acceptance of a grant from USDA Rural Development to conduct a feasibility study for a 1.8 mile shared use path along State Route 80 and approval of grant match in the amount of 23,205.75. Ms. Corinna?
So, please, when you consider the proposed motion, read that from the council action form. I did find additional information regarding the city's commitment between the time that we added this item to the agenda and the time that we corrected the council action form. This was a grant application that was put together by some volunteer grant writers for the city. It's specific to a feasibility study for a path around the Lavier Pit, 1.8 mile, a loop around the Lavier Pit. Our city commitment is 2,344 dollars. A portion of that is cash and another portion of that is in kind work on behalf of myself and Mr. Harrow. But, Cotees County Planning Department will also be participating with that two funds and Arizona Department of Transportation has also pledged a match.
So, if I might, then...
Yeah.
This 23,000, 10% of that in reality is money and the rest is in time?
Yeah.
So, okay, our impact is 20, is 2300 and not...
And the 2300 is also split amongst a number of organizations that does not all come to the city.
Alright, so it's...
Yeah.
Closer to 800.
Closer, yeah.
Alright.
So, do you have a specific, as in what the city is contributing?
Yeah, it's, we pledged 2,344 dollars. That includes cash and in kind.
So, how, what's, how much is the cash?
That we, actually, we won't know until we start paying for the cost of the feasibility study. So, the maximum that we committed is the 2,344 dollars. That would be the maximum cash, it could be cash and in kind.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? Ms. Klein?
So, the, the funds, the art portion of the funds, which department will it be coming out of?
That is planning money, which is the community development.
That'd be...
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the grant from USDA Rural Development to conduct a feasibility study of a 1.8 mile shared use path along State Route 80 and approval of grant match, grant match portion of 2,344 dollars.
Sure, you had a second, dude.
I said it.
Ms. Jackman with the next, she'll be second.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item seven, discussion of possible approval of a contract with Code Three Motors for the purchase of an new land. Chief Castillo, welcome, sir.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Council. Mayor Smith, thank you for the moment of silence in this beginning of this meeting. We talk about fire fireworks. Before you, you guys have a, trying to enter a contract with a company Motors to purchase of a new ambulance, pretty much new ambulance, this is a used ambulance. It's a 2012 Ford E350 by liter manufacturer, it only has 44,000 miles. This ambulance came from Manhattan Beach Fire Department, California. We contacted Manhattan Beach to question about this medic, you know, why we get rid of it, if there was something wrong with it because it has such a low mileage. Their policy is every five years, they just rotate out of these, doesn't matter how many miles they have or not. And then they usually hold them for about a year to three years as a backup when we get rid of them. Out of all the units we've looked at, that was the one that we, thinks is the one we can get right away. And one of the reasons why we need this right now is, I'm sure you're all aware, less than about a month ago, we had three of our medic units go out of service and had a lot of maybe five or six medic units. So we don't really want that to happen again. We're at this time trying to build our fleet of medic units, it's time to start getting a few more, and so we're looking for your approval to purchase this medic for a fight.
This is a Type Three?
Yes, sir, this is a Type Three medic, this is the one similar, the exact same one we have now.
Great. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
My question is, that point we have not been looking into, purchasing these types of vehicles with capital lease, no one by else. There are organizations, companies here in Arizona that do sell equipment. That way we would, could get, build his fleet up like he needs, and it would be much more feasible because you pay, you do pay a little bit higher than fair market value, but at the end of your seven years, you buy your vehicle for a dollar and you turn it back. There's been other people in this area that have bought tow trucks, other kinds of equipment, they do handle ambulances this way. I'm just curious why we haven't gone that route and looked at leasing ambulances also for emergency vehicles?
Right, so you did consider a lease at your last council meeting for the large garbage truck. As you may recall, there was 3% interest paid on that lease. We, as a city, don't earn 3% interest on our money. This would be an opportunity to borrow money from one of our enterprise funds and pay ourselves 3% instead of paying 3% to an outside organization. It just doesn't make sense when we're earning so little on our money to pay someone else that much more.
So I guess the second part of my question is, are we going to continue to look at building a fleet via Dr. Alton if it's so much better?
The next scheduled purchase for this fleet is grant funds that were applied for, by one of your volunteer current writers.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Has anyone from your department actually put hands on this vehicle, checked it out very good?
I know. The deal is, once he brings the truck, the ambulance here, before he cashes, exchanges, whatever, we are running a spec, we can have our city garage look under it, go through it. He says whatever it takes, we can leave it here as long as we want to have it looked at before he purchases it.
Thank you, Chief.
He's got a ride back to the United States.
So, my question, Chief, is, so then you don't have to go pick it up, they are delivering it to us?
Yes, it's free delivery, there's no delivery charges on us. The fine process finally happens after anything.
Okay, so how soon would we be able to take possession of it?
Well, if the council approves this, we make the phone call tomorrow and we start negotiations and we can get it.
Thank you.
Is it red?
Yes, sir, it's red.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract with Code Three Motors for the purchase of an ambulance in the amount of 50,000 dollars plus tax and title.
Second.
Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, item number eight. Discussion of possible, thank you, Chief. Discussion of possible approval of an emergency purchase of two vehicles from Lee's Auto Sales in the amount of 23,993 dollars for the police department. Ms. Corinna?
Thank you. So, so our police department was acquiring vehicles through Cotees County. So we were buying... So, we were buying vehicles with multiple miles on them and then hoping that they would stay running for us until there was another vehicle available. Coates County is no longer making vehicles available to us because they're extending the use of their vehicles due to anticipated budget shortfalls. But also, it's the fact that manufacturing is behind schedule that's most likely also playing into how long they'll be keeping their vehicles. In anticipation, we did sign a contract with E-Fleets for new vehicles and the council did approve two new pickup trucks, I believe, for the chief and deputy chief, and then six hybrid vehicles for patrol cars. Due to a shutdown of manufacturing, we don't know if those vehicles will be produced this year or next year. So, though we're still in line for those vehicles, when they do go on the production line, we don't know when that's going to be. In the meantime, the deputy chief had given over his vehicle to replace one of the patrol cars and the police chief was driving his own personal vehicle because that's how tight we were on vehicles available for our police department. After multiple months of trying to work with E-Fleets to come up with something, anything that we could get into our hands, we finally had to make the decision that we could wait no longer and I authorized the emergency purchase of these two vehicles for the chief and the deputy chief. I know that they already have had discussions with other departments about when their E-Fleets vehicles do come in, how can we make the best use of these in other fleet areas where we have a need. So, that's been asking for his approval of the emergency purchase.
Ms. Clang. Oh, I, you had said something before, I just gave you the opportunity to...
Oh, no, I was just, she was switching out my mind, so. I have a question. Why is it such a dire, a dire need now? There's no other vehicles that we have, we have no other vehicles that they could utilize. And so, that time, when you have six sitting over in the lot over there, are they not drivable? And if they're not drivable, why do we still have them?
Because we didn't have the time to prepare them for auction at the last auction. They need to be stripped out and prepared for auction and we didn't have time.
So, can they still be driven?
Not, yeah, not as patrol vehicles for our...
So, what's the number of vehicles that we have in our fleet right now that are operational? In our force right now? How many police cars are there?
I know we got fuel cars. Oh, just police cars?
What cars that would be driven?
Or the, just for the police department?
Yeah.
I believe we have seven to nine patrol cars and then the cars for the chief and then deputy.
And we cannot utilize those seven to nine cars for when they're on duty. Why is it that we need to purchase vehicles for them? Are these for them to drive home and drive back and forth to work? Is that what they're for?
For the chief?
Yeah.
These are for the chief and the deputy.
I get that.
Then, yes, and they do, and they do respond in these vehicles, yes.
So, there's seven people that are on duty at one time, is that what you're saying?
No.
So, that, my question is, why are we needing to purchase these vehicles right now when our financial status is so unclear that we're, you know, deciding how and when we're going to have money and such? And now, we're buying two vehicles and we have seven vehicles on the force that could easily be rotated through with people and they can utilize that one?
Yeah, so they can be rotated through if they're all working, if they're all operating.
So, the seven that we have are not all operating?
They are right now.
Okay, so...
Yes, but if they're not all operating, then we would just be putting this potential emergency purchase down the road.
Right, down the road and we know whether we have enough money and we can progress.
Well, we are budgeted, we are budgeted for the vehicles that we have ordered. And if we take delivery, if we are able to take delivery of the vehicles ordered in this budget year, then these vehicles can be reassigned to other departments that also have money budgeted for vehicles.
And, Ms. Clang?
So, we don't have any seizure vehicles that we could use like chiefs in the past have?
So, that the chief had pulled like the last pickup truck he could utilize from the lot and then ended up having to drive his personal vehicle when the deputy chief's vehicle was put into service as a patrol car. That was it. He was driving his personal vehicle.
If the answer is we didn't, we don't have seized vehicles that could be used. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending, the seizures are, are different than the used vehicles. Any other, Mr. Higgins?
Yes, I actually have a question, I just curiosity. You, you have vehicles ordered from a manufacturer. Which manufacturer is that?
Doc, a question.
Yes, I believe the hybrids.
Is it?
No. No, no, okay. Here's our E-Fleets guy.
The, the patrol vehicles are Ford Fusion hybrids. The, we do have, the, the original vehicles that we, trucks that we have are Chevy Silverado and quarter tons. We also have two Chevy Colorado's that are also on board.
And, and you think the manufacturer is not operating right now?
No, due to past closures, the schedule for manufacturer is behind. So, we don't, we don't even know when our vehicles are going to make it onto the assembly line.
Any other que...
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
I guess, this is, we had a contract with E-Fleet, right?
Yes.
Was there a performance period in that contract where they had to deliver the vehicles by a certain date?
No, we're, we're under no financial obligation with them to take delivery even. We could cancel that order if we felt confident enough that we could get vehicles on our own. But at this point in time, there's no indication that getting out of line with them would allow us to get in line somewhere else for vehicles.
So, there's no liquidated damages clause in the contract, there's no completion date that they have to meet?
I would, no.
Because...
Yeah, I would suggest that, a lot, our attorney could provide more, but now because of the COVID situation, there are a lot of these performance situations that are no longer valid.
My point is that their inability to perform for whatever reason has cost the city initially $23,000, correct? That would not have been incurred if they had the delivery date.
We incurred the expense in a way other than we had initially planned to incur the expense. So, we initially anticipated that we would have lease and lease purchase payments on brand new vehicles. We do not have those. Instead, we have these two vehicles that we purchased outright.
So, it sounds to me like we didn't really get such a good deal in this E-lease or E-Fleet contract, did we?
Not under these, not under these COVID circumstances, no.
Thank you.
Ms. Clang.
I don't know that I would necessarily blame everything on COVID, I just, I don't know. E-Fleet just didn't seem like it was that great. Again, I, I really have an issue with us even having this before us and discussing it when it's already a done deal and it's already been approved earlier. I guess I'm asking in the future that this come before us, prior to...
You know, ideally, it would, ideally, it would. We were in a situation where our police chief was driving his personal vehicle.
And we also have a situation where we have two police officers driving our patrol units to Sierra Vista and another one driving another one of our units to Douglas. You know, they can be driving their own POVs to and from their different towns and then pick up the unit one there and here too. And that might free up a vehicle or two.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the emergency purchase of two vehicles from Lee's Auto Sales in the amount of $23,993 for the police department.
I'll second that. Ms. Corral.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Clang.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes by for two. Item nine, discussion of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Step Up Naco, I'm sorry, Step Up Bisbee-Naco Inc., establishing a joint partnership for restoration of property located at 121 Fort Y Two Lane. Ms. Coleman.
Yes, thank you. So, actually, nine and 10 could possibly be switched, but we can talk about them in this quarter. As you know, when it comes to workforce housing, the folks with Step Up Bisbee-Naco were very interested in partnering with the city in order to get a program started. To the extent that they actually did obtain a grant for $50,000, which has been used towards the purchase of the home at 121 Fort Y Two Lane. I understand that they also were receiving an additional grant from Western Bank this afternoon and they applied for some additional funding to be able to rehabilitate homes for workforce housing. So, this would, this spells out the way that this partnership will work for the house. This one is specifically for the 121 Fort Y Two Lane memorandum. The one that you'll consider under item 10 is a general memorandum of understanding that will allow us to move forward with other properties as we become more comfortable with what our relationship is and how the rehabilitation will work.
Questions, item nine? Ms. Clang.
Can you tell us a little more about workforce housing?
Yes, yes. Workforce housing is a term that applies to homes where the buyers qualify for conventional financing. In some cases, that is an FHA or VA loan, but the financing would come from the bank, not from the organization that's rehabilitating the housing, which would be different from, you might be familiar with the Habitat for Humanity model, where actually Habitat is the lender as well as the developer or recaver. So, in this case, it would be someone whose income will allow them to qualify for the mortgage to purchase the property. That would be workforce housing.
Okay, so now, is that just for city employees or is that for anybody in the city?
Step Up Bisbee-Naco is interested in developing housing for nurses, teachers, firefighters, and police officers. And we have submitted a draft housing program to the city attorney for review and further consideration. So, before the house goes up for sale, we will have an affordable housing program on what's been approved by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a, a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Step Up Bisbee-Naco Inc., establishing a joint partnership for restoration of property located at 121 Fort Y Two Lane.
I'll second that.
I said it.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Clang.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item 10, discussion of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Step Up Bisbee-Naco Inc., establishing a joint partnership for restoration of homes within the city limits, I'm sorry, within the city of Bisbee's corporate limits. I think you just discussed that, but are there...
Yes, so this is, this is a general memorandum as opposed to the previous one, which is very specific to the property.
And this, this one is to see how things go?
Right. And we would come back with you then, for example, if they work with us on the redevelopment of 416 N Street, you would see a new, specific MOU for that specific property.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Jackman.
Is there any way you can provide us with, I guess, their procedures for people to qualify in these sets, teachers, firefighters, police, nurses?
Right, so that's the, so we did provide a draft housing program to the city attorney for review and before any of these houses are sold, that will come back to the council for approval.
So, is that going to include the criteria in order to qualify for this? Is that what that will include?
Well, they would, well, they would need to be able to qualify for a home mortgage.
So, that's the only qualification?
With the understanding that Step Up Bisbee-Naco is interested in providing housing for teachers, nurses, firefighters, and police officers.
We're not setting the, the financial criteria.
I just want to make sure there's nothing out of the criteria of the, the status.
Well, you will see, you will see that agreement before any property is ultimately sold to the, the owner, the ultimate owner.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Step Up Bisbee-Naco Inc., establishing a joint partnership for restoration of homes within the city of Bisbee's corporate limits.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. And Ms. Corral, you're very busy tonight.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Clang.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. And Ms. Coleman, thank you, you've worked really hard on getting this together and I appreciate this, it's going to be very, very good for the city of Bisbee. Item 11, discussion of possible approval of a court consolidation agreement between the city of Bisbee and Coates County. Ms. Coleman.
Yeah, this has been under development for a while. We've actually been operating under our previous agreement with Coates County for the better part of a year now, waiting for the development of the new consolidated court agreement. This agreement does include the county's commitment to pay the justice so that we will no longer be paying a separate justice fee. That will save about $12,000 a year under this new consolidated court agreement, which is one of the reasons that we have been patiently waiting for them to develop this and not insisting, you know, that we move forward quicker with the new agreement.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, are we going to get any money out of it? Like, is this going to replace what's going on right now with the just, like, if you get a ticket, is that what this falls under? And you get a ticket, it goes to the, it goes to the county, it goes to the justice of the peace. We get no revenue from that. It all goes straight to the county. It's just the same thing.
Yes.
So, we will still end up getting no revenue from any, any services that are rendered.
Right.
So, in budget talks, we talked about possibly looking at re, bringing back our magistrate. Are you either looking at that or is this just going to go through again and we're just going to continue to use the county or are we going to look at the magistrate for next budget?
You can certainly do that.
This is, this agreement is saving $12,000.
I get that, I agree, I know that.
Yeah.
Because if we bring out the magistrate, then, then we get the financial gain from it. That's my question, why we're not pursuing that. I get why we're doing this because we have to do it now, but are we even looking at that for future revenue? Bringing it back to the city for the exact same amount? I'm just curious, you know? I'm just curious, you know, is that ever gonna occur?
I, I can, I can provide some math for you so you can make a decision, the determination for your next budget cycle.
That, yeah, you mean, that's why I brought it up in the first budget cycle, yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a court consolidation agreement between the City of Bisbee and Coates County.
Second, we have a motion, and we have a second, Ms. Cardona?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item twelve, uh, possible approval of a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion and consultation with city attorney to provide legal guidance on pending matters. Do we have a motion?
A move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion and consultation with city attorney to provide legal guidance on pending matters per ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A three four seven.
Second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second, alowes in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? We are in executive session.
Uh, is that in session?
Thank you, we have a motion in the second to come out of executive session. Alowes in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? We are out of executive session. Item number thirteen, city man futures report.
Okay, I'll try to, uh, make those quick. Um, fire inspections, um, there is some concern about businesses being closed and whether they would pay for their annual fire inspection. I wanna come back to at your next meeting, the proposal that, given, um, the Arizona CARES money that covers the cost of, of wages for fire employees, that we encourage businesses to get their fire inspection and waive that seventy-five dollar fee for them. It's more important, I think, that we know that they're, they've been inspected and safe, um, than collect the additional fee at this time. So I'll bring that to you for approval at your next meeting. We did receive a donation of, um, some masks and gloves from Premier Alliance, and those were masks that the fire department made available to folks who were in town. I don't believe this past Saturday, but a couple of the first Saturdays, we were requiring masks. Um, the fire department, they go downtown on Saturday and make clothes available to folks who came unprepared, um, to visit us. Um, partnership agreements, um, as you heard tonight, um, we are rethinking those agreements on what, um, whether or not they're meeting our needs, um, working with folks like the county on how can we make this agreement more equitable for everyone? Uh, so if you do have questions about, uh, any of our partnership agreements, um, feel free to reach out to me. Um, I have notes about Xerox and E-Fleets and Clean My Tour and My Museum, and I can cover any of those, um, with you, but, uh, mostly the message is that all of the employees are being cognizant of the partnership agreements that we have, of what they're costing us. Um, the library, for example, has put their sent us, uh, order on hold, um, so that we don't incur that expense, um, during this time. So, uh, any questions, feel free, um, to reach out to me. And then I did wanna let you know that, um, the library, uh, worked with, um, folks on the, um, Women's Suffrage plaque, um, for speech that was given, uh, in Bisbee, and, um, don't be surprised when you see that plaque, uh, mounted on the side of the library. Um, and if you're interested in that particular wording, that was approved at a designer board meeting, and I can, um, provide that to you, but there will be a monument, a plaque, to the suffrage movement on our Copperfield Library in New York.
We'd like to the gentleman of Bisbee, please. Any, any? Anything else?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Higgins?
I move to adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm, Ms. Klein, I have to.
What's that?
Yeah. Ms. Klein, please.
Um, I've got comments, um, on behalf of myself and my family, and on behalf of Chief Burris. On behalf of myself and my family, we send love and courage to Daddy Mitz, my family, on the profound loss of retired firefighter Kyle Mitz. We lost Kyle on June third. He was a wonderful husband, father, grandfather, friend, and firefighter. He was a quiet, funny, and well-respected man. After serving twenty-plus years with Bisbee Fire, one of his post-retirement jobs was with Bisbee Unified School District, and it was always fun with lots of laughs when he and Dr. Davis harassed him daily. He was also a mentor and respected by my son, who would hang out at Station Two when he was growing up. He was honored to be with Kyle last Tuesday. Rest easy, firefighter Mitz, and we'll be sure to keep an eye on your chief guardian. And these are the words from Chief Burris. I was Kyle's first partner at Station Two in Warren, and later his companion. He was the nicest person you could meet and look forward to seeing. He came to us from Tombstone by way of North Dakota. He was very committed to Bisbee Fire. He was reliable, teachable, and worked hard. Just a good guy to have on your team. He was also well-liked by everyone. It's a big loss for our department and community. He served his community and his church well as a member of the Knights of Columbus. He was a good friend, and I'm gonna miss him. I also would like to thank Bisbee Fire Department for the fantastic firework show on Saturday. There was twelve firefighters up there putting on a first-class show, and the finale was phenomenal. The text I got from the mountain after words read back to spur Kyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein, you're very, very well standing, much appreciated by the band, I'm sure.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Do we have a motion, and a second? Alowes in favor of adjournment, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Please stand and adjourn.